Would you all please, first of all, take the roll, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
And Mayor Neely?
Here, would you please join me in the flyers, though?
At the occasion to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the original test for all.
We have some proclamations, but before that happens, I believe that Moderator Guile of CIC is going to introduce the CIC officers, is that correct?
Yes.
Please come forward. This has been a process ongoing, and you all followed the commission's recommendations.
Do you all want to join me up here?
Yeah, come on up forward, the officers.
As you're well aware, it's been a four-month process. After some tumultuous times, we've got the act together, and everything went smoothly. We had elections Monday night. I've got to say thank you to the whole city for being patient with us, and to Mayor, for some of your suggestions, to your attorney, to Katie for working with us, and we got a lot accomplished in the last four months. We had a nominating committee to nominate these candidates. We had a great election on Monday night. We got our CIC bylaws committee going, that Bob LaSalle is working on. We've got our neighborhood association templates done, and handed out to all the neighborhoods. So a lot has been accomplished. So on Monday night, we had elections, and I'd like to introduce you to our new Chair, Alice Watts, right there, and to our new Vice Chair, Michael Berman, and to our Secretary, Amy Willhite.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And I just totally know where you came from, why don't you state the neighborhood associations that you come from, starting with Alice?
I am representing...
You want to come up here, at least? I'm done now, thank you.
I am representing McLaughlin Neighborhood.
Thank you.
Michael Berman, Kanema Neighborhood.
Very good.
And Amy Willhite, Gaffney Lane.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the service you're undertaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we will move into proclamations and presentations, starting with our favorite Metro Counselor, she also represents as Metro, Carolina Collette. It's good to see you again.
Yeah, I'm here so often these days, I feel like I should have an office at City Hall.
Well, we don't get one, so you don't get one.
That's a good point. So this is actually my first, that one? Okay. My first, I think it's my first presentation of the year. Okay, there, that one. Now do this one?
Yep.
Okay. Technical breakdown, okay. So I'm going to give you an overview of a number of things, this is kind of the breakdown, and I'll, I may have cut one or two of these out, actually, since we did this slideshow. As you know, last month, I was going to come in and make the presentation, but instead, we ended up going with Commissioner Roth and Tony Conkle to DC, so I'm happy to be back here, and it seems like, as I'm giving these updates around my district, about half of the update is about Oregon City, so for some of you, this is going to be...
We appreciate that, yeah.
It's going to be old news for some of you, but I can't stop telling the story, because there's so much good stuff happening here. But first, let me get back to just a quick wrap-up of last year. Anybody who's a Facebook friend of mine already knows, we have a baby elephant, and she and I are really good friends, and I put regular movies of her up on my Facebook site, so be happy to friend anybody, and she's quite a celebrity, and actually, I think, thanks in part to her, and in part to the great weather, we had our second biggest day ever at the zoo this weekend. And it was, I think, our biggest Easter egg event ever at the zoo. We also opened our new veterinary center last year at the zoo, and it's a beauty, I think many of you have probably had tours, and we're always happy to give tours, so let me know if you want to have a tour of the veterinary center. It is worth seeing, I mean, it's really quite state-of-the-art. We also, last year, completed, in the east part of our region, the East Metro Connections Plan, where the cities, Gresham, Troutdale, Fairview, Wood Village, got together and actually solved a number of transportation problems that had been simmering for probably more than a decade, of how do you connect Highway 26 and Highway 84 out around 283rd, and really make the best of that part of the region. There's a great industrial site opportunity there that we haven't been able to connect to. They got together as cities, and working with their business community, and solved those problems in a really wonderful plan, so you'll be hearing more about it as we move forward with trying to find the money to implement it. It's a great plan. Also, we turned over management of Glendover Golf Course, is one of the facilities that Metro inherited from Multnomah County, was Glendover Golf Course, it's a very old course, but it's a very much-loved course. We had to do a number of upgrades to the site, and as, just a part of routinely getting new bids to manage it, we have now got a new manager on-site, they're doing a new master plan, and we're doing just some painting, upgrading, updating, nothing very dramatic, because again, we're, you know, funds are pretty limited.
If I could ask you a question there?
Yeah.
The revenue you get, is it more than pay for the maintenance that you're expecting to do?
That site, actually, well, there are very few of our facilities actually pay for themselves. I mean, if you know the history of Metro, we inherited things like the St. John's landfill, when nobody knew what to do with garbage in the region, we became the garbage overseers. Multnomah County gave us 14 pioneer cemeteries, because they couldn't make them pencil out. We're still having a hard time...
And we didn't get to give you ours, though.
No, you didn't, thank you. Although, we're happy to have them, I have a lovely little Civil War, Daughters of the, what is it, G.A.R., Grand Army of the Republic?
Of the Revolution.
No, I'm sorry, it's Civil War.
Oh, okay.
G.A.R., Grand Army of the Republic Cemetery in my district. But they obviously don't pay for themselves either, and we inherited from Multnomah County their parks, and their, like, Blue Lake Park, oh...
Oxbow.
Oh, gosh, it just went, Oxbow, I knew it began with an "O." Oxbow Park, we inherited from them as well. None of these actually pay for themselves, so. We also completed and opened three major transit-oriented development sites in the region last year. Acadia Gardens, you may be familiar with, it's near Clackamas Town Center, it's workforce housing, it's really quite an exciting place. To me, the highlight of these, though, is Case Station, it's one where we were able to build a lead-platinum affordable housing complex, near the yellow line, the Interstate Max Line, and that's a pretty huge accomplishment, to be able to make a building that's affordable to build, but also affordable to live in, because it has such low energy needs. And Petty Grove is one in northwest Portland, and it's workforce housing. You know about the Get Street Smart program, the handout I gave you is actually from last year, and it's just to remind people that we will be offering it again this year. Oregon City, and I think Gresham might have been the two cities that participated, or Lake Oswego, were the two cities that participated last year in it. So we will be doing it again this year. This year started off, really, in December, with Metro agreeing to go to the voters in May, May 21st, to ask for a five-year operating levy, to balance the budget on some of those facilities that I mentioned earlier. We inherited a lot of parks from Multnomah County. We also had the voters approve twice, once in 1995 and once in 2006, tax dollars for Metro to go out and buy land to preserve in perpetuity for the people of the region. A lot of that land is upland habitat, for, it's the headwaters of things like the Tuolatin River, so we've been buying that land in this economy, because of the low property values, we've actually bought a lot more than we anticipated, and as a consequence, we now have 16,000 going, very close to 17,000 acres, that we are having a hard time maintaining out of our general fund. So we convened a group of people to help us figure out how to pay for the maintenance upgrade of those parks, but also the Nature Neighborhoods Grant Program, that we have operated, that's incredibly successful, people around the region love it. If we can't pass this levy, we have to get rid of that program. If we pass the levy, we can triple it, and so we can offer $750,000 a year in grants for the Nature Neighborhoods Program. We're asking for a rate of 9.6 cents on the thousand, which will generate somewhere between $7 and $10 million a year for those five years.
How much of an increase is that?
Pardon?
How much of an increase is that?
Well, it's 9.6 cents on the thousand.
Oh, that's the increase?
That's the increase, that's the rate we're asking for. It's, you know, less than a dime, for a homeowner with about a $200,000 home, that's about $20 a year. Someone pointed out that it's about the cost of a haircut, so for that, you could help maintain and restore, and provide access to some pretty astonishing parks around our region. You all have what I think is the jewel in the crown, which I'm going to talk about in a second here.
Could I ask you a question?
Uh-huh.
On the level of Nature in the Neighborhoods, and of course, I know of some of the projects that have been approved, if, in fact, an entity wanted to work on removing invasives on a major way in a publicly-owned facility, not one owned by Metro, could that qualify as a Nature in the Neighborhoods project, or you know it this time?
Well, yeah, the Nature in Neighborhoods Restoration Grants, that's what this money is for. So, these are the smaller grants, though, they're not the big capital ones there, they tend to be around $4,000 or $5,000. I think West Lynn has gotten, I'm not sure if this is the maximum, but they've gotten two grants for $25,000 for the Camassia Natural Area. So yes, those are the kinds of grants that communities could apply for, for their own projects, and those are the kinds of projects we really want to see, is these great community partnerships. This just shows you, some of the golden ovals are regional parks, three of these are new, Mount Talbert Park, Graham Oaks, Dunn and Wilsonville, and Cooper Mountain up near Beaverton are the newest ones. The others, we actually, are the ones that we inherited from Multnomah County. And then the large green areas are some of the areas that, where we have really a lot of land, and you can see Claire Creek out here in Clackamas County. Shehalim Ridge is really, I think, I was going to say it's our biggest, but I can see right here that Smith and Bybee is bigger, but it is, it's a substantial one, and that's the headwaters of the Tuolatin River, so that was a real score for us. It's not, as one of the opponents of the measure likes to say, it's really a pretty scrubby, ugly place. It was logged out, and it isn't the most beautiful place on the planet, we can make it one of the most beautiful places on the planet, but more important, it is the headwaters of the Tuolatin River, and we can help preserve water quality. It's like owning the Bull Run watershed. You want to protect that, because it's where your water comes from, it's where the folks on the west side water comes from. And speaking of the Nature Neighborhoods Program, we are, again, just completed a number of capital grants, and we have another set out right now, let me see if I have a list here. Oops, nope, I'll go back. Oh, I can't go back. There, oh, too far, this always happens, doesn't it? The, there's, projects right now are being considered for the next round of capital grants, and in fact, I don't have a list of who has applied, I know several projects around the region and around my district, but I don't have that list with me. We'll be announcing those winners in the next few weeks, I think. Those are the bigger grants, that were part of the bond measures that we passed, and there's, I think we've now granted around $6 million total in grants, and we have about $15 million altogether. And the big one is Kanema Gap. This was, this is so, I mean, this is one of the stories I've been telling around the rest of the district, this is one of the jewels in the crown. Those of you who know it, and everybody in this room knows what an incredible place the Kanema Bluffs are, I'm not at all shy to say, I think the view from Kanema Bluff is one of the most beautiful views in the entire state. They're just, it doesn't, there's certainly nothing on the Willamette that comes close to that view, and for us to have been able to secure, we now have all 330 acres that we were targeting, that's a huge regional resource, it's a spectacular park. We've been building some trails, we'll be continuing those trails over the coming months. It's just, like I said, you guys know, this is your park, this is really quite an amazing place. We've also been accumulating other property recently, we've completed some acquisitions in the Columbia Slough Natural Area, Shehalim Ridge, we bought the large piece of Shehalim Ridge, I think, last year, and then just recently bought another piece. We're trying to basically close that gap as well. Tuolatin Valley Parks and Rec owns some land out there, the state owns some land out there, and we'd like to have a connected habitat for fish and wildlife, but also to protect those upper lands for the water quality. I handed you a flyer on the Community Investment Initiative, it's this piece, and the reason I want to talk about this, two reasons, one is that, again, Oregon City has really come out on top in this program. This is the program that Metro kind of created a couple of years ago, and then spun out to the private side. It's a coalition of 26 businesses, it's really the private side of investing in our region. When we looked at how much it will take to just repair and replace infrastructure in the next several years, region-wide, it's, the bill is like $10 billion. To add all the growth that we need over the next 20 years, as we're adding more people to the region, more jobs, more employment, that bill goes up to $27 to $41 billion. I don't have to tell you that there is not the money in the government sector, in the tax side of our region, to pay for those things. So Metro convened a bunch of the business community, the private side, and said, you know, is there money out there, on one hand, but also, is there, can you teach us something about investing that we don't already know? Can you teach us something about infrastructure? And come to the table with us. And they have really come forward, they have a strategic plan, their four major strategies, as you see here, are this Regional Infrastructure Enterprise, and that's an organization that actually is looking at, going to have a couple of pilot projects in the next year or so, where we will partner, Metro and probably the Port of Portland, will partner with the private side to bring different kinds of money to the table to invest in an infrastructure project, probably something in a town center or a regional center, and probably also an industrial site. So you'll be hearing more about that, this will be the first time we've actually been able to partner with the private side. We've also, they, the Community Investment Initiative Leadership Council, has created this program called the Development Ready Community, and you are the pilot project for the development-ready communities, and this has been really helpful for me, as I've been trying to tell the story about Blue Heron, and how Oregon City on its own would probably not have had the capacity to redevelop a site like Blue Heron. I mean, Metro wouldn't have either, so it's not, it's nothing to be embarrassed about. The state on its own probably wouldn't have, but getting this grant and this pilot project, the goal of it was to help build in some of that capacity, so that you'll get some advice from the Urban Land Institute and others, who really have a skillset that we all need to improve, and so, as the pilot project, it really is part of the package that we can tell others when we're talking about how do we build Oregon City this great site and work with our partners. So I was really happy to see that you were the pilot project, I was hanging there for a while, wasn't sure that the phone calls or the night were getting me anywhere.
I think we've had some difficulty in getting to some of the new councilors that have come in about the importance, but I think they're turning around, too.
Well, yeah, I think it's going to be a great program. I mean, it's a small piece, but it's a piece that is part of the story of what we're trying to accomplish with Oregon City, and from my perspective, especially with the Blue Heron Site. They also looked at transportation finance, and on this one, they've sort of backed away from the table a little bit. We have a Transportation Committee in the region that I chair, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. We have a subcommittee of that committee that is on transportation finance, and our committee and the Leadership Council's committee have worked together on funding strategies. I can tell you, we have no silver bullets, we have no checks in the mail yet, but we are looking at, are there other ways that we could be helping to match the small amount of federal and state dollars that we do have for transportation? And then, the fourth of their strategies was this 21st Century School Facilities, and what we did with that was, we actually, Metro, working with the Leadership Council, developed a planning tool that enables school districts to look at what districts are losing students, what districts have too many students, what districts have vacant or room in their school buildings, what districts are having to close schools, or are having to build new schools, and put all that information together, so that we actually can take students across a district line, in some cases, it's a matter of blocks, and take, make use of a school that they were about to close, and instead of having to build a brand-new school building. So Metro's put together this planning tool that now the school districts will be using, and it was as one of the functions of this Leadership Council. This strategic plan was actually adopted last summer, so it's not all that new, but the implementation of it is new. Climate Smart Communities is a program that we have been working on for a couple of years, I've given you pretty regular updates on it. In the 2009 legislature, the Metro region was given the mandate of coming up with a scenario, a set of strategies, that help us reduce our greenhouse gas levels to the state targets. It's specific to small vehicles, cars and small trucks, but in the Metro region, we do that by looking at land use and transportation together. We have now got, I don't have one with me, I think there might be in your packet, the flyer on it, yes, thanks, and that describes the three strategies that we're looking at, and I'm meeting one-on-one with several of the councilors and mayors in the district to just talk with you about, does this make sense, is it starting to gel, are the ideas starting to make, to really come together? Are we looking at the right strategies? Are we missing some important ones? We've met now with the Equity Community, Communities of Color, we've met with, we've had several focus groups with the business community, and that's been very eye-opening, because the business community seems to all agree, at least the people that we've met with, that reducing greenhouse gases is really for them, about being more efficient with their businesses. It's, to them, an economic boost, and the fact that it also reduces greenhouse gases is kind of a, just a bonus, from their perspective. So that was really good for us to hear. We've also worked with the public health community and the environmental community in designing these strategies, so we've had a lot of feedback. You'll be seeing, last week, there was a first story in the Portland Tribune, and I think Clackamas Review, and some of the other newspapers around the region carried a story about it. We're going to try to get a few stories out, just to get people thinking about what we could be doing, because we, unlike the rest of the state, this region has to actually adopt a strategy and implement it. So we're trying to get the word out that this is coming, we don't think that it's an onerous demand at all from the state, although it's taken a lot of work to figure out how to do it, but we want to be able to, we have to adopt one, I think, in December 2014, and then adopt it into our regional transportation plan next year. I think I just said most of that. Regional Flexible Funds is another pot of money that the Metro Council and J-PAC, the committee I spoke about earlier, the Transportation Committee administer on behalf of the region. This is the federal transportation dollars that come to the region, and in the past, we've had about $40, $50 million to deal with, actually about $60 million. This year, we got an extra $33.8 million from the federal government. So the way that money breaks out is that there's what we call Tier One, is money that's been committed for regional planning, for things like light rail debt, for a lot of region-wide programs. The $34.8 million is distributed through grants, and I can't remember if you've gotten a grant through that in the past, last year, actually, I can, I'll show you in a second, Milwaukee got the grant from Clackamas County, it's not a lot of money, it's a few million dollars every couple of years, this time it's for three years, and some of it goes to freight projects. But this extra $33.8 million that we got this year, we had a discussion around the J-PAC table, and decided to create a new Regional Economic Opportunity Fund, and use that money to open some really specific employment areas, provide access, in some cases, bike, pedestrian, and bus access for employees, and in other cases, freight access. So I think that, and none of that money has been awarded yet, we just got all the applications in at March 15th, so there'll be a large public process over the next couple of months, over the summer, actually, to make those decisions about who gets the funding. This is what, last year, Clackamas County got $3.8 million, three of that went to the 17th Avenue multi-use trail in Milwaukee, which connects the Spring Water Corridor to the Trolley Trail, and a small freight project over near Oregon Iron Works. Another source of transportation dollars is the Statewide Transportation Improvement Plan, also known as STIP. The allocation for 2015 through 2018 is $65.6 million. This might shrink, depending on whether the legislature in 2015 comes up with a revenue source to pay for the Columbia River Crossing. If they don't, the $27 million annual payments for the CRC will probably come out of some, some portion of it will come out of this $65.6 million. But right now, we have a list of about 150% of what we can actually fund, we're going through a pretty significant public education process now, and information process now, to whittle that down to 100% list, that will go to the Oregon Transportation Commission in October. And I think, the project that I was really rooting for from Oregon City did not make the 150% cutoff, so my apologies, I really fought for it, but...
Appreciate it.
I actually was the only person voting for it at one point, that really happens to me, but it was like, aye? You know, we do what we can.
Now, this is strictly state funds?
This is state funds, yeah. The other grand program that Metro's operating right now is the Community Planning Development Grant one, and this one you do know about, because you have an application in for the Blue Heron Site. The letters of intent were due on February 15th, we got a lot of them, and these are the communities that got the grants last year, and my list, here. So the people who submitted applications from our district this year, there are two projects from Lake Oswego, the one for Willamette Falls from Oregon City. West Lynn submitted a sort of complementary proposal to do their side of the Arch Bridge planning, if it, you know, and I said, to go ahead and submit that, because I think at some point, we're going to want to be thinking about both sides of the bridge. It may not get funded in this round, but it's really good for West Lynn to be seen as somebody who's engaged in this as well, and the people who actually recommend who gets these grants are people from the development community. So even if West Lynn doesn't get the grant, and I'm really counting on Oregon City getting the grant here, but even if West Lynn doesn't, it's good that their name and their interests and their plans get in front of these developers, so that as we move forward with the Blue Heron Side, the West Lynn Side is also something in the back of people's minds, and eventually, their time will come up, and they, you know, we'll be able to get some grant funding for them. Clackamas County, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, now, these, what we see here, of course, funds that have been allocated over the period of time.
These are for last, yes, those are for, those were already allocated in previous years. So you all got some for the South End Concept Plan and Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan.
And Perquise.
And so there is also, just as I was about to say, Clackamas County has three projects in this year, and Happy Valley has one submitted this year. The visitor venues, the zoo is where we bought the offsite site that I think I'd mentioned before, Roslyn Lake out by Sandy, where it's a 240 acres that will become our Elephant Preserve. We still don't have the money to actually develop the site, but we have some of it, so we'll be moving forward on that. And we are about to break ground on the onsite Elephant Center at the zoo, which will more than triple the amount of space that we have up there, and if you're interested in this, you should go to the Oregon Zoo website and look at the master plans, because it's a pretty extraordinary site, and the elephants will be able to pretty much wander freely throughout the six acres of their habitat, they can choose when they want to be indoors and when they want to be outdoors, and that's the goal, actually, for almost all of our animals, is that they'll have the choice of being in indoor facilities or outdoor facilities as much as they want. We already have that for some of our primates, and they seem to love it, they, it's great. Once they get out, at first, they're very timid, and then they just start playing, and we can actually have different kinds of primates together in the same outdoor space, that we were concerned about whether they would fight, and they, once they're out there, they don't, they really interact in very positive ways. So the Oregon Zoo is actually kind of ahead of the world on a lot of this, we're doing, we're breaking a lot of ground on animal behavior, just because we have this policy of, sort of like, no kid left indoors, it's like, no animal locked up unless it really wants to go indoors. I know there's a short version of that, but I can't remember it offhand. The other thing is that we are still in negotiations on a convention center hotel.
I don't understand the reasoning behind an offsite Elephant Center.
The idea there was that, we, originally, the plan was to just be able to have matriarchal herds that would be away from the zoo, we'll keep, obviously, keep our elephants at the zoo, a lot of them, but they like to have space to kind of wander around, and so being able to provide a much bigger space away from the zoo, where they can just wander around, and particularly, the male elephants, they tend to be less social than the females, although we're learning now that they... females. Although, we're learning now that they, they can interact in and out of the herds as well. As we've gotten to know more about the herds and about their behavior, we are now thinking that we will also use that facility as a place to go out and actually be breeding full matriarchal herds. So in the future, if someone wants an elephant from the Oregon Zoo, most likely, we will say, you have to take the whole family, because they form matriarchal herds. They form families, the moms and the aunties and the kids. The males are in and out, but the, the females, these matriarchal herds, tend to want to be together. And so we, we want to be able to have enough space where we'll have whole families out there.
So if you marry me, you get my whole family.
Exactly.
[laughing]
Yeah, I mean, and, and what we're also hearing is that a lot of zoos are getting out of the elephant business, and so we may become a sanctuary for a number of other elephants. There may be a program of bringing elephants in and out of that preserve. We really haven't sort of firmed up all the plans for it yet, because as we're, as we've gotten closer to it, we are learning more and more. But the notion that we can have these matriarchal herds out there, that's pretty exciting to the whole elephant world. I mean, the people are really excited about it. We have only Asian elephants, and they're endangered. And so the fact that the, the Oregon Zoo is probably one of the most successful breeding areas for Asian elephants is, in the world, we really are the best at it. And so we're viewed as the one place that can help restore these herds. They don't have much native habitat left. I mean, there's virtually no native habitat left for Asian elephants. So this is, you know, Sandy, Oregon's going to be home for a lot of, a lot of these elephants, I think. And what was very fascinating, and I don't want to dwell too long on this and take up your whole meeting, but one of the things that was very fascinating was that a, a youth group bought that campsite next to it. If you've been out at, at Roslin Lake, they didn't know that the elephant preserve was going to be near there. So they came in to comment when they heard that we were buying the elephant preserve, and they said, you know, this is about as cool a thing as you're gonna imagine. We had no idea when we were buying this campground, that we were going to have elephants next door, but the kids are going to go gaga. I mean, it's just, it's going to be a really exciting partnership. It won't be open to the public like the zoo is, but kids at that campsite are going to know that there's elephants, right? They're going to hear them, at a minimum. They'll probably be able to interact with them somewhat. We'll have some open house days on a regular basis, so people will be able to come out and see them. But it's two-hundred-and-forty acres, and they're going to be able to go as far away from people as they want or as close to people. They tend to be pretty social. So if you've been up and met Lily, she just, she just wants to come up and hold, basically, hold your hand in her trunk. I mean, she's just, ugh, you know, all over you. But they're, they're social creatures, so it'll be fun to have an opportunity for them to wander around. And then, I've just added this slide, there's, there's, you know, I really feel like, thanks to Commissioner Roth, we turned an amazing corner with getting a federal partner. And I, you know, we haven't obviously gotten dollars from the EPA yet, but we have a relationship that we didn't have just a month ago. And, you know, I've sort of described this as Kathy went up and kidnapped the Assistant Administrator of EPA, and Beaverton Mayor Denny Doyle said, yeah, we're still looking for him. But we returned him.
Unharmed.
But it was, yeah, it was, it was, you know, what we are learning is that people just need to see it.
Yep.
And if you don't see it, you think, oh, yeah, it's another industrial site. When you see it, as he did, you see it's not just another industrial site. It is one of the most spectacular places on the planet, and needs to be treated that way. So we're, we still have, and you'll hear, maybe, I'm not sure if Representative Barton will talk at all about the five million that we have that we're asking from Salem, but we're, we have a complimentary ask, we haven't formalized it yet, of EPA and others in DC, to help us make that match, so that we can begin the process of stabilizing that site. And then I wanted to give you just a brief overview of this program. You might remember, last year, or maybe it was two years ago now, we came out with the third of our toolkits, and it was on something called eco-efficient employment. And I think most people looked at it and thought, yeah, what, whatever, you know, what is this eco-efficient employment thing? And so I actually got a little budget amendment in our budget last year to do two pilot projects, so people could understand what it is. And we got, the pilot projects went to Old Town Hillsborough and Gresham Vista. Gresham Vista is actually on 238th. It's a two-hundred-acre, fairly greenfield industrial site. And what we did was, we worked with, in that case, the property owner, is the Port of Portland, with some businesses who might be interested, with the city of Gresham, and with a consultant called Methune, and helped them develop a plan for the site that would make it, would basically develop it as an eco-district. So we would look at the most efficient way to deliver electricity to the site, the most efficient way to deliver water, to remove sewage, to, you know, how do you build an infrastructure at a site that is as efficient as possible, so that businesses coming in know what it's going to cost them, you know, where are they going to get their power, water, what businesses we want at that site. The, the site in Hillsborough is a little bit different. It's an older industrial area. The businesses were already there, and we just worked with them of, how can you refine your operations? How can you clean things up? How can you be more efficient with your electricity, sewer, infrastructure, the grid, all of those things? And so there are now on our website, this is so hot off the press that they wouldn't even give me copies of the report. They only gave me covers.
Ah, there you go.
So the, the final report is on our website, on the entire program. And then there are reports on both the Gresham one and the Hillsborough one. And I'm mentioning this here because I think that there's, again, an opportunity to look at the Blue Heron site from an eco-efficient, sort of eco-district approach. And that certainly was one of the messages that we got from Maddy Stanislas at EPA, was, don't just think about this as an industrial site that you're going to redo with housing or something, but think of it in terms of, can you put manufacturing back? Can you generate energy there? Can you build a sustainable community there? Can this be the greenest former brown field that anybody's ever seen? And I think that this, this program will help provide those answers to those questions. And so I'm encouraging, I'm going to encourage my colleagues to have another budget amendment to continue the program, but even if we can't, it only costs about forty thousand dollars per pilot. So, or it's, actually, it was less, because we participated. But if we don't participate, it'll be about forty thousand dollars. So I think that we can tell the story and figure out a way to get some funding to, to have that be maybe a part of what we do in Oregon City. That's it. Questions? I want to remind everybody to get to opt-in. We now have around fifteen thousand people who are on our opt-in panel, and the more, the better.
I've got one question that you didn't touch upon, but of course, our condor breeding program the zoo has there in
Yeah.
is a really important one. Is there any chance that we'll ever get condors released back into the Columbia Gorge? Because historically, they were there.
That's what we hear. We have heard that, that we're, we're approaching a time when they'll be released in Oregon. I'm not sure if Columbia Gorge is where they're talking about it.
Maybe they could be in the Kaniba Bluffs.
Exactly. The Blue Heron Condor Site.
Good. They need a food source.
Yes, that's the only problem. They need carcasses. If you've ever been out there, there are some grisly details about that facility, the dead little critters around her. But it's a very exciting place to visit. Again, that is, we are one of the most successful breeders of condors in the country as well. Our, our condors have a higher survival rate than almost anywhere, so.
That's great. Well, I want to thank you. Other questions? You know, you, more than any previous councilor for us, have come to us on a regular basis.
Yes.
I know you visit all of your cities, which now includes Happy Valley, I believe. And you've been, you've been great in terms of getting information out to us. I wanted to say how much I appreciate it.
My pleasure. I truly love my cities.
You've been wonderful.
And my unincorporated areas.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, now, now we'll go down in terms of the government groups.
Brent Barton!
Help, help!
I think you went down south.
Down south.
You don't see me arguing. No, no, the, the structure and the hierarchy, municipalities first, county second, metro regional government, and then state.
Better than I'm usually treated. Mayor Neely and Commissioners, thank you for having me. For the record, I'm Brent Barton. I live at 410 Jefferson, about three blocks from here, and I represent District Forty in the Oregon House of Representatives. And I, as you can see, I have a presentation here. Let me, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I get paid to talk. Let me, I really do appreciate your fitting me in this evening. How long do I have here? How long would you like me to have?
About thirty seconds.
No problem.
I'm sorry, but Carlotta, Carlotta.
Well, this has been fun. Well, the good news is, is on this slide, the first slide is the most important one. In fact, it's the only one I particularly want to draw your attention to. You'll note my contact information there.
Your contact?
Yeah. My email is by, it goes to me and my staff. It's by far the best way to get information to me. We do, really do read it. And when it's a constituent who writes me, I try to personally respond. But even when nonconstituents write me, I generally read every email sent to me. You also notice my cellphone there. It's also, texting is a very good way to get through to me. Some of you guys avail yourselves of that. It is a best way to get, texting's a good way to get ahold of me right away. I generally don't answer my cellphone during the day, because I wouldn't be able to get anything done. But in the evenings and weekends, otherwise, just call the office. So that is the most important thing. I have, I have written, I printed this out for you, so that I won't go through the whole thing. You are welcome to read it or not, as you wish, and then email me if you have any questions. I also have some extra copies by the door, in case anyone would, would like to, in the audience, would like to read them. Having said that, again, how long, I can, I can open for questions right then.
He was joking.
I want, I want to be respectful of your time.
You're wasting your time by asking how much time you've got.
So let me, let me tell you, let me summarize what's in that package for you. I think the first segment is a series of budget information. Hey, some people find it interesting, and ultimately, what drives the process. Those numbers, I'm pretty sure, are all factually accurate. You can feel free to rely on them or quote them as you wish. The second part is, is kind of a blend of fact and opinion. It's things that I'm working on, things that are happening in the legislature. The last page is sheer conjecture on my part of their predictions. It's not dissimilar to my predicting the weather. You know, it's, it's an educated guess, but only that. So that is what is in that package. I'm happy to talk to, tell you guys what I'm personally working on, what the legislature's doing. We can talk about Blue Heron. What is of interest to you guys? What would you like to look?
Let's talk about that.
Blue Heron.
Great. So I have, I have two objectives. I have two things that I want to do in this legislative session. Number one is a policy bill. I want to create a rainy day fund, so that the state government saves money to stabilize school funding. That is my primary policy objective. My second objective, my kind of take-home district objective, is getting that five million dollars in state funding, bringing that home to Oregon City, state match. When, at a sub, the governor, it was originally the governor's recommended budget. That included a ten-million-dollar local match. Our city manager sat me down before session began, made it clear that, A, I need to bring home five million dollars, and B, we can't come up with ten million bucks. You know, but we could probably do five. So that is what I'm working on. I have good news and bad news. There are three relevant entities down there, the House, the Senate, and the Governor. I have something to say, I have quite a bit to say about what happens in the House. I feel very good about the House delivering on five million dollars with only a five-million-dollar local match. I also feel very good about the governor's commitment to that. He, I mean, after all, he recommended to begin with, but he's okay with reducing the local match. The Senate is where we have a serious problem. And it is a legitimate problem, and it's unfortunately also the, the one place down there at which I have the least direct influence. Indeed, sometimes, one of the biggest surprises, I think, you, if, should you ever go down to Salem and spend time there, one of the biggest surprise, you might, you would think, a reasonable person would think, ah, Democrats control both chambers, they're all going to get along and generally have their, this is not how it works. It is astonishing how the chambers go out of their way firmly to poke each other in the eye. And so indeed, when, if I let on how important this is to me, the Senate, it, it, I hate Sid, they really would hijack it and try and leverage that to try and get me to go along. It's, it's politics. It's legislative politics at its worst. And so anyway, I can't help too much. Should you want to contact anyone, there are two people you should contact. First, of course, your state senator, Alan Olson. But the two people that I think have the most to say about this. Number one, Richard Devlin. He represents Westland. He's right across the river. If you have colleagues, he's from Toowaltin himself, but he is the co-chair of the Ways and Means Process. So that means he writes the budget for the Senate. He has a lot to say about that. Number two is the person who oversees the Subcommittee, and that is Chris Edwards out of Eugene. And I, off the record, or we're on the record, but I think that might be where our hang-up is.
It's on the record.
Frankly, yeah, indeed. Senator Edwards, he's, he's the Eugene guy. He just doesn't really care about this. Or at least, he's at a minimum acting like he doesn't really care about this. We're doing everything in our power to do so. But anyway, that's where the trick. I can't guarantee results. This is what I told our city manager beforehand. I cannot guarantee results, because I can't control results. I can control what I do, and that I can guarantee. And that is, that I'm working my hardest to try and bring this home. And I think we have a good chance.
If we all threaten to give up our duck season tickets, would that hurt?
Actually, no. He's a beaver. He's a beaver, if you can believe it. I don't know how he got elected.
Okay.
No, he really is. He's a big, big beaver fan, so it's tricky. Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I always support the land-grant institutions.
Exactly, there it is. So that's one. You know, I'll tell you, if, I can, we can be quiet now, or we can talk, I can come back if you want at a different meeting, or probably, that's what you don't want. You want to get this out of the way. I can talk about public safety. I'm on the Judiciary Committee and the Business and Labor Committees, which means I do a lot of public safety work. I'm also in the middle of various purse fights, if that's of interest to you guys. I know it is indirectly. Budget things affect you indirectly. What, what would you like to know, or alternatively, like me to know, if I can take down the sale?
Columbia River Crossing.
CRC, Columbia River Crossing. So that is, it's, it's an interesting one. I've always been supportive of this Columbia River Crossing personally. I, I'm, I love infrastructure. I, I'm one of those guys who's seldom met an infrastructure project that I, that I can't support ultimately, provide. Now, the CRC is a package, it's been processed to death. I think there's, it's, there's something in both the process and the actual proposal for everyone to hate. That's frankly true of any ambitious infrastructure project, I think. And so ultimately, that passed. Now, I, that passed the Oregon, and it's been signed by the governor. Now, what does that mean? Actually, I happen to think not that much. There are three things that need to happen. Oregon has to step up with its share. And as Carlotta noted, that actually hasn't been funded yet. That's the real trick. Saying we support, we're on board, doesn't really mean that much. I, I feel like the, the discourse around it kind of got carried away relative to its actual importance. But the state of Washington and the federal government are the other key links. So a lot of things have to happen. I think we are not at all at the end of the process. I think we are, maybe we're at the beginning of the end, but I doubt it. I think we're, we're still right in the middle. I, I have every confidence we're going to be debating this, at least five years, probably ten.
Oh.
Yeah. Sorry, joke's on, joke's on us.
Any other questions? First of all, I think it's been a long, long time since our state, state representative has been a resident of Oregon City. Do you remember the last one? Maybe before my time. I don't know.
Oh.
I mean, here in Oregon City. And so it's a real pleasure to have you as a resident of Oregon City, and it's great.
Well, I'll see you at the High Cliff then.
Oh, hey.
Seriously, please email me, call, if there's anything I can do.
My guess is, tonight, we don't get out until after the High Cliff closes.
Yeah, fair point. I'll be thinking of you guys.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks, Brent.
See you guys.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I've got some, I think I'm, I think I'm in line to do this. I've got some, a proclamation to read, and a couple of announcements that I'm going to do before I take citizen comments. Also, after I do this, we are going to take a break. We came out of urban renewal, went into an executive session, came right into this, and I think we're going to have to take about a ten-minute break. But before we do, I want to go ahead and read a proclamation here. Whereas in eighteen-seventy-two, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. I didn't know they do there. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless, countless other wood products, and whereas trees and whereas trees in our cities increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city and its Arbor Day partners, Oregon City School District, Clackamas County Soil and Water District, Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, Friends of Trees, the Oregon Department of Forestry, have been working together to plant trees and educate the community about the importance of urban forestry, and whereas Oregon City will celebrate its first year as a Tree City USA with an award from, from the Arbor Day Foundation. Now, therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim April six, 17th, excuse me, 2013 as Arbor Day in Oregon City, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant and care for trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Now, we've got some special events that are actually planned for Arbor Day. We're going to have on Arbor Day a kids' storytime and crafts going from 10:15 to 11:15 a.m. at the Carnegie Library. Anybody that wants more information can contact the library, specifically talking to Linda, Linda Ackerson, who is our children's librarian, at, at 503-657-9269. We're going to have a free tree giveaway donated by the Clackamas County Soil and Water District. And we can get ahold of that organization through their email or their phone, and we have flyers here. And there's also going to be a tree planting and poetry from 12:30 to 1:30 p.m. at McLaughlin Memorial School. That's, of course, on South End Road. The, we, I, I think last year was our first Arbor Day where we did a tree planting at Chapin Park, and it was, I think, one of the last functions that, that Mal Pleasant School had before it closed down. So, this is becoming a regular event for us. Scott, is there anything else that you care to add, add, or Tony?
I think, that sounds like it's pretty well covered.
Yeah, I think, just for the, I think, just to reiterate, Mayor, concerning the free tree giveaway, we're working with Clackamas County Soil and Water Conservation District. There are limited supply of that, so that you do need to sign up in advance for that. And you can visit www.c conservationdistrict.org, or you can call them at 503-210-6012 for that, for that tree giveaway that we're working with them on.
We also have our annual Oregon City Earth Day event, Saturday, April 20, 2013. The site registration is in previous years. It's at Clackamas Park from 8:30 to 9 o'clock. There'll be a lunch beginning at 12 o'clock. A lot of us from around cleanup events are, miss our lunch because we're out there too long. And we bring, brings personal tools for personal use: gloves, shovels, pruners, loppers, rakes, wheelbarrows, and push brooms. We do have some tools that will be available there, but they usually don't have enough for the various groups that come in. The lunch will be at Clackamas Park, and will be sponsored by Higgin Food and Pharmacy. And there will be raffle tickets. If you bring, if, if you bring two cans of nonperishable items for the Oregon Food Bank, you'll get raffle tickets, and there will be a raffle drawing at lunchtime. Go ahead and call, contact the Code Enforcement at 503-496-1571. And if you have a specific site in mind that we don't have on our list, simply bring up that site. We can include additional sites. And so, that's our major, that's our major event that's coming forward. Is there anything I missed, City Recorder, before I take, we take a break?
Nope.
With that, we're going to go take about a 10-minute break, and stretch, and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first one I call is the first one who speaks.
Very good. Thanks. William Becker, Oregon City. And because I'm so slow at writing congratulatory or thank-you letters to the commission and other people, I thought I'd take a chance to thank some people publicly this way. I had an experience a while back when my mother passed away with Mountain View Cemetery. They, we bought plots, you know, did the whole thing. The staff up there was incredible. Sarah worked with us at the beginning. Kathy helped tie everything up and do the final paperwork. I think it was Mark that set up places, plots for us to look at, took me out there. The people that interred Mom, everybody all the way stepped, all the way through was just fantastic. They worked really well with Hillside, and I want to thank them and Parks and the city for that. And also, City Manager David Fraser, and Tony Conkall, and John Lewis. I had some issues that I've been trying to resolve, and they took time out of their day to meet with, meet with me and let me be part of the solution. And we had a really constructive time, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the compliments.
Mr. LaSalle.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Bob LaSalle. I live in Oregon City. For months, I go without addressing you, and then suddenly, it seems like I'm talking to you at every other meeting.
Well, we appreciate you, Bob.
Well, I can assure you, I'm not really enchanted with my voice, so this won't continue. But I'm here tonight by the direction of the CIC to discuss the funding for the Neighborhood Association insurance. I've been researching this quite a bit, and I've had a firm figure of $750 a year for just the Park Place Neighborhood Association insurance, as for directors and officers' insurance. And I'm sure all the other Neighborhood Association costs will be similar to that. But under the direction of the CIC from last Monday's meeting, I'm now further researching the cost of strictly liability insurance. And I've got a rough estimate of that of about $500 a year, but I don't have any quotes yet. Those will be coming along.
For our neighborhood.
We were told Monday that possibly state law, by state law, volunteers can't be sued, so we may not even need the directors and officers' insurance. But Katie Riggs is working with, she said she's going to talk with Nancy, and then if they had to go to the attorneys, they'd find out for us about that. I've been told that $5,000 has been put into the city budget to reimburse the neighborhood associations for the cost of that insurance. And I'm assuming that's their two-year budget. So, that would only be $2,500 a year. That is not nearly enough. It's, it's, just wouldn't even come close at $500 per neighborhood association, because we have 11 neighborhoods now. And hopefully soon, we'll have a 12th. The Two Rivers Neighborhood is working on getting organized. So, I'd like to suggest that you put in $12,000 for the two-year budget. That would be $500 per neighborhood association. Now, some of them may decide that they don't need it, and so that money wouldn't be used. Others may decide that they really do want directors and officers' insurance, if we're not exempt. So, you know, there's a lot of adjustments that could be made with, with that amount of money. And then, of course, the officers of each neighborhood association would have to take it to their neighbors for a vote, for them to approve that action, because we would actually be using their voters' money to provide the reimbursement for the insurance. But I had an idea, though, that one of the previous speakers was talking about Kathy Roth. What was it? She stole somebody for a while, or kidnapped somebody?
Don't say that. I want to hear that story. Don't say that for the police chief, please.
Maybe the CIC could get together for a contract for Commissioner Roth, and we got this approved.
There you go. There's an idea.
Anyway, we're begging for more money.
I'm just going to pose the question, in terms of liability insurance, and organizations that are recognized by the city, in fact, are, are, under the, I think, goal one establishes the neighborhood associations as a mechanism for citizen input. Can, can there be a broader application that, that makes, that could be applied to all the neighborhood associations?
In this, Mayor Neely and Commissioners, this is something that the City Recorder and I and Katie Riggs have talked about, and sort of, you know, what exactly are the neighborhood associations, and how do they fit in with the city? Under the city's conference plan, the CIC, the Citizens Involvement Committee, is the official neighborhood involvement committee. The neighborhood associations do some of it, plus they do a number of other things in addition, depending on the neighborhood and how active they are. And so, there's an element of them that, that does sort of take on a little bit of an agency of the city. But there's also some other things where the, they do things that really aren't under the control of the agency, and maybe the city does or doesn't want them to be considered agents of the city. And our insurance policy liability covers the city and all of its agencies and instrumentalities. And the question really is whether or not these neighborhood associations are instrumentalities of the city. To the extent they are, it, it would allow them to be covered by the city's liability insurance, but it also impose additional requirements on them, including, you know, the open records, open meetings, public notices, you know, there's some other legal obligations in terms of what they can and can't do, and would probably increase staff time to, to sort of supervise and be involved, and also to some neighborhood associations, probably be a little more intrusive from the city than, than the neighborhood association might want. And so, you know, the, the way city management looks at it now, the neighborhood associations are independent bodies that the city recognizes as having, having a significant voice in city affairs, but they're not part of the city. You can certainly change that, but it has implications both for the associations themselves, as well as for city, and how that interaction happens.
Thank you. William Gifford and James Nacita, please, come forward.
Perry hadn't seen you were going to brought to.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. And building on the theme of neighborhood involvement, and also on, on our Metro presentation this evening, I did want to report, as the Land Use Chair for the Hillendale Neighborhood Association, that we had a representative from Metro, one Jonathan Saul, who is the Science and Sustainability Manager for Metro. And he gave a presentation to our Neighborhood Association regarding Newell Creek, and that whole Newell Canyon area there, and what is being done with that. It was a really informative presentation. I thought Mr. Saul was particularly well-spoken, and, and really deserves the word of steward. And he's very conscious about, about our, our, our legacy, and what they do with our money for us. And it was, it was very well presented, and I just want to recommend that to any other neighborhood associations that would want to have a presentation from Metro. They are certainly willing, able, and, and very competent in making those presentations. It was, it was nice to have that partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James?
Good evening. James Nacita, Oregon City. I'm here tonight to comment on something I noticed in the recent report by the Local Government Personal Institute, in their SDC investigations that was released earlier this year. And want to draw this to the commission's attention, and, and request maybe having the commission look into it. There's a point in, on page 26 of the report, where the investigator mentions his efforts to, as part of his evaluation of processes and systems, take a look at past email records of city employees. And in a paragraph, he indicates regarding the email records of two management-level employees, quote, that these email records, quote, "have not been archived and were deleted by those employees." I find it very profound if, if two management-level employees had, if this is true, and part of what I hope the commission will look into is whether in fact it is true, had their entire, had deleted their entire email archives from their time as, as city employees. That's a really significant concern. I can't think of a more effective way to sabotage and undermine public process and transparency if all of the documents that would be disclosable through the Public Records Act are simply destroyed. I mean, without impunity. What, what more efficient and effective way to undermine open government? So, I was hoping that I could interest the city commission in looking into this, and maybe through a work session or other mechanisms, think about what kind of systems could be put in place to, if this is happening, prevent that in the future. I could think of a few things. I don't know if it'd be too much of a burden, or whether it'd even be advisable, for example, to disable a delete function on a, on a, on a city email account. Or to have, for example, city employees, when they're hired, get, you know, an acknowledgement that they have to sign acknowledging, you know, that this is city property, that when they create a record, it's city property. They don't own it. But it's, I'm, I'm concerned about it.
I'm sure that happens, but the Commissioners are told that when we come on.
Yeah. But do employees, I mean, what, what happens?
Yes.
So, if that happens, what, what is the consequence if, if it's not abided by? Because if this is, if this information is in fact accurate, it wasn't abided by in this case, and what are the ramifications of that? So, I just wanted to raise that concern. Thanks.
I'll take Commissioner Smith, and then if, if management wishes, or attorney wishes to respond to that, we'll do that. But Commissioner Smith has asked before.
I guess I will just say, these were questions that were asked, and we never got, I don't know that we ever got an answer. I don't remember ever getting an answer.
Commissioner Roth is on, too. Let me have her pose her question.
Well, my, my question is, having worked for very, very large companies, we could delete all we want to do, but they never went away. And so, we don't have that capability here at the city?
Yes, we do.
So, then why weren't those emails available?
So, do you want the facts now?
Okay.
All right. So, apparently, the city's former system, and I want to say, it must have been about three years ago, when the city got new software and was able to archive all of those records. So, now, it's not possible to delete all that stuff. It's my understanding that these employees left before that system was in place. There's also a policy that the city has that. It does require that, and they also get trained on that, on the difference between a public record, because we get a lot of transitory emails, for example, that are not public records.
We do, too.
So, and actually, our IT department encourages us to delete those that are not public records, because it overwhelms our storage system. And so, we do do that. We delete those, but not public records. And so, Nancy goes through, and the policy explains what a public record is and what it isn't. And as far as those individual employees, we have gone back and tried to find as many records as we could through our IT, IT system. They are still looking at that. HR is actually investigating that. I emailed the Commissioners that in private some time ago. And so far, we haven't been able to prove that any of the former employees deleted a public record. If, but that doesn't mean we're not, we're not finished looking. But the, the penalty, as Mr. Nacita questioned, I think he probably knows the penalty. If you, if you destroy a public record knowingly, you, we would be referring that to the district attorney. So, that's not something we would take lightly. We wouldn't be able to disown employees who don't work here anymore, but we could still make those referrals if we found that out. And the Oregonian has raised that very issue with us, that Mr. Nacita did, about a month ago. And we undertook the investigation right before that. So, once we have more information, we will let you know. If there's a referral made, we will certainly let you know. But we take that very seriously, and I think it's a good point.
Commissioner Ma.
I'd like to focus on the insurance. I'd like to
still make those referrals if we found that out. And the Oregonian has raised that very issue with us, that Mr. Nacita did, about a month ago. And we undertook the investigation right before that. So once we have more information, we will let you know. If there's a referral made, we will certainly let you know. But we take that very seriously and I think it's a good point.
Commissioner Mumm?
I'd like to focus on the insurance. I'd like to get an update when Katie gets that information about if they are covered or are not. And if not, we need to have a work session and kind of bring in the key people from CIC to talk about it, if it is an issue.
That's exactly what the commission asked us to do a month or six weeks ago, was you sent the neighborhood associations to discuss it.
Right.
They've discussed it, they brought it to the CIC, and then Mr. LaSalle brought it to you this evening. So then that information then will be taken and reviewed, and then we will have another session with the City Commission. So that's what the plan has been.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great.
Any others? With that, we're now an hour and a half into our meeting and can we adopt the agenda, please? Is there anything anybody wants pulled from our agenda?
No.
Hearing none, we'll just go ahead and proceed. We're going into general business and we have before us first Resolution 13-10, a resolution supporting the Metro Community Planning and Development Grant Application for Willamette Falls Visioning, Master Planning, and Resoning Process, which I believe that Councilor Colette was referring to as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commission. The resolution before you tonight, number 13-10, is to support the Community Planning and Development Grant Application that the city submitted for Metro's consideration. It's a $400,000 grant request. It also includes a match of $50,000 from the bankruptcy trustee, $100,000 from Clackamas County, and $100,000 from Oregon City. You may recall, we approved the agreement with Mr. McKittrick. That's gonna go in front of the bankruptcy court probably within about the next 21 to 24 days, so we are waiting for that final approval. And then after this item tonight, you have an intergovernmental agreement request with Clackamas County for their funding source, which then needs to go to their commission for their approval as well, but we have been working with them. It's been reviewed, they're aware of it. So the resolution highlights the importance of the site, the opportunities on that site, the difficulties and the partnerships that we've created, and puts the, solidifies for the grant application that the City Commission is aware of the project, is aware of the request, and supports what we're trying to do out there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure.
Okay, I'm confused because this is between the City of Oregon City and Clackamas County. Are we going to have one of these?
That's the next one.
I think this, I think that one's gonna be six days.
Yeah, it's the next.
Yeah, it's the next one.
Then I'm not confused.
Thank you for clarifying.
For yourself.
It was six days with Metro, is that right?
Right.
Yes, it's the resolution that we will submit to Metro to support our grant application.
Hearing no other questions, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution Number 13-10.
It's been moved by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Carol Polly. Now we're voting. And that was unanimous vote. Going on to the next item, which I believe Kathy had a question about, or she might not have.
All right, showing my ignorance here.
No, that's all right. We all do that.
I was gonna say, usually it's me.
Okay. This agreement is between Oregon City and Clackamas County.
Correct.
I haven't seen anything yet that's between all four collaborators.
We are working as the main body with the agreements to the partners, because we're gonna be responsible for the master planning project, for the contract, and for the consultant management. And so they, they're coming on as partners to us.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't have one large governance document amongst all the partners. Essentially, for the master planning project, we're creating individual agreements with each.
Okay. Oh, that's part of my question, but the other part of my question is, I haven't seen anything that has all four of them collaborating anywhere. I've seen a separate one with Metro. I haven't seen anything with the state or the county. Well, wait, I did see something with the county.
With the county. We don't have the state at the table in that capacity, but if they were gonna bring $5 million, we were gonna say, that's great.
I just like signatures.
I'm sorry?
I like signatures and, you know, to me, we're kind of dealing out here in the air in good faith that this is all, everybody's gonna hold their word. And I'd like that kind of tied down.
And what you're saying is, we are going to get them and it's gonna be between, individually between ourselves and these other agencies, as it's not a joint agreement between all, potentially four, but it's an agreement between Oregon City and each one of those, is that correct?
Correct. It's an agreement between the city and Mr. McKittrick. This is an agreement between us and the county, and this is for bringing funds to the process.
Yeah, to the process.
We weren't, we weren't planning on creating specific agreements with Metro or the state. We're still working together collaboratively at this point in the process.
And we don't know if we'll need them. So let me, let me explain, there's a difference between an IGA, which the commission would have to approve, and a memorandum of understanding, which the commission typically wouldn't approve. So if there's a governance model that's needed on that site, for example, if we actually own part of the property in partnership with those other entities, any of them, or all of them, or if we didn't own it, but we had an operations agreement where, for example, we would provide police services or water or something like that, and they would provide operational staff from state parks, for example. If we get into a governance situation, then we would have to have the agreement you're talking about, and that would be what some people call a 190 agreement, but it is essentially an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement. And that does require signatures, resolutions by the governing bodies of each of the agencies. But we're not at that point because, as you recall, we thought we were headed there because initially Metro was assuming we're gonna buy a piece of this property at Blue Heron. Actually, the whole thing, perhaps. Well, then they sort of pulled back from that as we finished up the due diligence and then we said, you know, we probably should get a master plan before we figure out what the governance model is gonna be and whether we even need one. So that's, that a little bit of background about why we don't have a governance document yet, because we really don't have any governance issues, we're just cooperating.
Okay, well, I guess where my other point of it's coming in is, we've been kind of moving ahead on the assumption that everybody's putting in $100,000 a year. But we really don't have anything that says that.
That's in the memorandum of understanding.
And we have that from everyone except the state?
And that doesn't bind anybody, by the way. We said in good faith that we would do that and we've been holding up our end, and we've actually been successful in using that example with our partners, who have held up their end.
Well, some of them.
Well, this agreement from the county is a hundred, isn't it $100,000? Not the $100,000 when we wanted it necessarily, but it is there.
It is there.
So I'm feeling pretty good about, about the agreement right now. And depending on what comes out of the master plan and where we end up on the property, I think we didn't want to have a governance agreement when everybody in the room was nervous about what was there and what's gonna happen and what's it gonna be like. We wanted to wait till everybody was calm and relaxed and comfortable moving forward because that is a complex, you know, these 190 agreements are complex and they require all of us to do things and take on liabilities.
Well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so during the due diligence phase, we had an agreement with Metro, and we were the two main bodies bringing money to the table for that due diligence work over the summer. And now we've moved into this next phase for the planning, and the parties that are bringing money to the table, we have agreements with, with the bankruptcy trustee and with Clackamas County, hopefully. And then if we're successful with this grant, we'll be bringing that back for your approval because that's, so we're not, we're not, Metro isn't, you know, the model we've been working under with our parks and open space, they're not putting money into the planning process. We're applying for that grant. And so if we're successful with that grant, we'll bring that back to you to approve as well. So those will be, those will be the agreements that we have in this phase of the project.
They would not be a partner in terms of the grant coming to per se, but they are a partner in the sense that they may be granting us money. That is it. It doesn't commit, here we got, here we're looking for a memorandum of understanding that brings money from both of them. In the other case, we're applying for a grant, which I presume anybody can apply for a grant.
Correct.
And so that's a different, that's a different arrangement.
Correct. We're reached, yeah, this IGA with the county is to come to agreement by both Clackamas County and Oregon City of what money is gonna come, what the agreement is, what the expectations is for cooperation between the city and the county, what the decision-making, who's gonna be responsible for consultant management, for final decisions of consultants. It's just laying out the terms of our agreement. So we're not asking for money from the state. They're still a partner.
Right.
In terms of, we realize we have this larger partnership that's been, that we've been working under this whole time, and this is kind of an offshoot of it, okay? This is the planning part of it. And we're taking the lead on that and we're the central part of that, and we're reaching the agreements that we need to on the financial and decision-making with those that are bringing money and resources to the planning process.
You being in Washington with me, this came out of my concerns there and other discussions I had there regarding, I don't want to be promising things to federal agents that we are not able to deliver on. So that's why I'm trying to really make sure we have our bases covered on this.
Understood.
Thank you.
With that, do I hear a motion for the intergovernment agreement?
So moved. Oh, Carol did, here.
Okay, well, the actual move, the people that pass this triggers were, Carol Polly made the motion and Betty Mumm did the seconding, in spite of her voice, that's not the way we do anything anymore, unfortunately. So now we're all voting.
I said second, then I pushed the button.
I was getting ready.
Did anybody push their respective button?
I know.
Then it's unanimous vote. With that, we'll go on to the second reading of Ordinance 13-1006. This is a motion, this is an ordinance with municipal code relating to creating a film and media production permit system for the use of public property. We've actually had the first reading. Do you want to review it again for any reason?
No.
No, there's no need to. Do I, do I hear a motion for second reading and final adoption?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Reading? Well, yeah, we don't vote yet.
Right. We need the reading.
We need the reading.
And the reading, ordinance number is 13-1006, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City adding Chapter 12.24 to the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to creating a film and media production permit system for the use of public property.
Vote, please. And again, unanimous vote.
Nice one.
With that, we're moving along now, folks, going to the consent agenda.
Wow.
And we've already, do I hear a motion for approval?
I moved it through.
This time, we'll find out who. I missed it, it went so fast. Who were the four who made the motion and the second? Well, Kathy Roth, yes, Kathy Roth made the motion and Betty Mumm did the second. Vote, please. Unanimous again. With that, we probably are going into the city managers' report.
Mr. Mayor, since we were on the topic of Blue Heron, I got notification that the Animal Planet Network program called River Monsters, or I think as Jeremy on the program says, Rivamonsters, is coming to Oregon City and specifically to Willamette Falls to look at, look at our eels.
Cool.
So I hope he doesn't get swept over the, over the falls, but
That's exciting.
That's pretty exciting and it dovetails nicely with our film and media ordinance, so I want to thank Eric again for his work on that. And hopefully they'll stay a long time, it'll take him all summer to catch an eel, and the crew will be here all summer.
Yeah.
In our company, so. Also, I have a letter from PGE. As you know, we recently settled their franchise agreement, and what's really exciting about this letter is this LED lighting program. And I did email the commission about that, but this thing, this is the greatest thing because it's gonna save the city so much money in energy costs and maintenance, the maintenance that PGE has to do on the lights, the change out of the bulbs, I mean, these things last 40 years. It's just a great program and there's a general outline here, and then I have one copy of the customer report that Nancy will also have in her office, so if you want to see the actual, you know, more detail about the company's operations in Oregon City and the region, that's our report. And this is a letter for each of you. And I think Mr. Conkle has some announcements about South End Planning Concept upcoming dates. Do you want me to give those dates or are you?
I'm ready, yep. So the community advisory team for the South End Concept Plan will be meeting from 3:00 to 5:00 on Friday, April 12th, at the McLaughlin Elementary School District. And what's been happening is that we had a community workshop on February 27th and our consultants, and we've gone back and came up with three design concepts that will be, then be opening for the public to look at and comment on and tell us what they like and don't like about them at an open house, which will be on Saturday, April 13th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at McLaughlin Elementary School. You can also visit our website, southendconceptplan.org. So hopefully you can come out Saturday, take a look at the three concepts that have been created. There'll be refreshments, face painting, kids' activities, so lots to do.
And can I just make one comment on that? I was at the South End meeting, neighborhood meeting, talking about the lottery rollback that everybody's gonna vote yes on, on May 21st, and Pete was there speaking about the concept plan, and he did an excellent job.
Great to hear. Thank you.
Very good. And while we're handing out those compliments, I also want to take a minute to thank you, Mr. Conkle, and also Scott Archer and his department, as well as the public work staff, for the hundreds and hundreds of trees that they have planted and the man-hours that they put in and their tireless assistance in achieving the Tree City USA Award this month. So thank you, gentlemen, and thank you to your department staff for helping us with that. And then Nancy, I had a update, you know, I believe it was the Clackamas River Water Commissioner Holloway that was recalled, and there's some controversy, of course, about boundaries that we believe are mostly the responsibility of CRW, and the county's trying to help sort that out. But just to make sure that our Commissioners didn't have any questions or there wasn't any anxiety among the public, I wanted Nancy to give you a brief update on that.
Not too much to give. As you know, the recall election took place on the 12th of March and recalled a board member. There was controversy surrounding the election due to the district boundaries, which the city manager just mentioned, and the board member that was recalled raised several concerns and questions, and the city is investigating her allegations. Some of these include concerns related to the recall petition and elections results, which of course is a Clackamas County elections matter, not a city matter. Others are related to city election boundaries and water customers paying bills to CRW that could possibly be Oregon City customers, although our utility billing doesn't, at this point, doesn't really recognize that, but that's going to be investigated as well. The city manager has called for a meeting to get the necessary people together to investigate everything and, if necessary, make appropriate changes. So that's where we're at. We're just beginning the investigation.
Thank you, Nancy. And you also had something about July 3rd?
Yes. July 3rd is, of course, the day before July 4th. And there has been a question whether or not we're, you will be holding a meeting and, because the 4th, or excuse me, the 3rd of July is a regular city commission meeting. Last year, we did take that day off and worked around it with any agenda items, so I'm just bringing that forward to you to see if that's something you'd like to do again. Of course, it can always change at the last minute if we find that we need to hold the meeting, but it's your call at this point.
Fine with me?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
On a meeting off, okay. So at this point, then, we will
Unless something important comes up.
That's right. We will cancel that meeting on July 3rd.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And then last but not least, about 30 years ago, someone in our midst took an oath and put on a uniform and a badge and a gun and set about protecting the people of Oregon for about the last 30 years.
I wonder who that is.
And that's our dear friend and our police chief, Mike Conrad, and Mike has announced his retirement effective May 31st. And today, I concluded that I was gonna appoint Lieutenant Jim Band to replace Mike. Mike is gonna stick around with us for six months or so after his retirement goes into effect to help with the transition. There will be a number of promotion opportunities in the department that result from that, and I think having Mike's I think having Mike's there as a steady hand while that process is unfolding will be really helpful to the department. They do a fantastic job, and I'd just like to stand up and thank you.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Of course, I've had the privilege of working with seven different police chiefs in my career, and Mike's at the top of the list, so thank you for your service. And I'm gonna pass out, here's the draft press release that'll be going out tomorrow morning. If commissioners have any questions or concerns, we emailed these this afternoon, but if you have any questions or things that you think we need to add to our press release, please let me know. And that's all I have this evening.
It's my turn. When I came on to the city commission, I think it's a fair statement that the Oregon City Police Department was in disarray, there were bad relations between the line officers and the police chief. And there were attempts to implement certain changes, but you all work as a team, and if you can't implement those changes unless you work as a team to do so. It is clear to me that you've done a great job of that. I hear no, I hear no comments from the line officers regarding your performance, in fact, well, I do, but they're very good conversations, whereas I heard nothing but negative comments. You've turned our police department around, we're, I think, all extremely proud of the work it does. And our investment over you over these last few years have proved to be very well-spent monies, and I'm pleased that you're able to take some time to go through a transition. I've been impressed by both of the lieutenants that you promoted, and I'm pleased that the decision was made, actually, to make the promotion within the police department. I think that probably does a lot for the morale as well, is to bring in somebody, well, it's nice when we bring somebody from the outside, you can't bring the outside. But the point is that you've been able to, I think, give the opportunities to, for many of our police officers to advance, and have been able to then identify the strengths of those officers, and have made decisions accordingly. You've done a tremendous job, Mike. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
The, for the public, we're, tomorrow evening, we're reviewing and making selections for grants that have been submitted to the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust. The Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust is from our four percent motel, hotel tax, and almost all of their drives from a single hotel, but also our RV park. Those are the only sources of funding I know about. Maybe when the, maybe when we have certain developments coming into Oregon City, and the falls becomes a destination point, we'll have lots of hotels, and we'll be able to collect all kinds of taxes from the hotel. As is usually the case, the request for grants exceeds the monies that are available, so the board, it's comprised of the city commission and four other citizen members, will be making decisions tomorrow night in terms of the allocation of those funds. I'd say, like we always do, we have some great proposals, and it's not always an easy process to make decisions. And you're invited to come, if you wish, to the, to that particular session. I'm hoping that Kathy Roth has a report.
On what?
Washington DC.
Well, on Wash, I haven't talked about that yet?
No.
Not here, you haven't.
We had, I think, a wonderful, productive trip to Washington DC. Tony did just an excellent job in the presentation of things that needed to be presented to, how many meetings we had, seven? Six, seven, something like that?
Six, seven, yeah.
We had the lobbyists for Clackamas County, which were invaluable. They took us to all the shortcuts through all of the senate buildings and cafeteria, we now have been in every senate cafeteria and congress cafeteria there is.
That's great.
And so they showed us all the shortcuts through Underground DC. The legal underground.
Commissioner Roth, if I might, the reports back from our staff and others who were there also were very complimentary of your representation of the city, so
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, I think you did a good job.
But we met with Greg Walden, Kurt Schrader, Jeff Merkley
Wyden.
Ron Wyden. And then we had this, I still don't know how many people were in that Monmouth, Mammoth meeting we had, but Matty Stanislas, who's the assistant director of the EPA, set up a meeting for us at the EPA building, and there were probably fifteen?
The director, assistant director of Brownfields, Sustainable Communities, National Park Service
National Parks, Department of Economic Recovery, all kinds of people in this meeting.
Fish and Wildlife.
He just brought together, and then there were another, probably ten people on the phone that we'd never got to see, but we talked to. And the upshot of the whole thing was, you know, none of us have the money, but somehow, if this was my interpretation, we're gonna get it together. We're gonna work on getting this thing together. And then today, I heard from Charlie Galbraith at the White House, and so he has the packet, and now he's getting the video sent to him, and he's gonna give me a call. And in fact, I may be at a party with him next month, so hopefully that'll work. But maybe we can get, I asked him for other ideas of ways that we can get money to come to the site. So I think it was just a phenomenal trip, and I think we really accomplished a lot in a very little amount of time.
Absolutely. Thank you both.
Yes, great job, thank you.
Wish for president that, even a valuable resource, and being able to go there and make the presentation, along with our very competent planning director there was great. And of course, we've mentioned earlier, Carlotta Coletta was very involved in that effort. A real, a real great team to send there, thank you so much.
Thank you, okay. Can I say one other thing, yeah? It's not about that.
I won't have to take back my thank you.
No, no. And I'm not even sure I can say this here. But it's about the water rate rollback?
Just do it.
Okay.
Yeah, you can probably, you can say about anything.
Yeah, you can't have staff do anything for you.
Okay, I won't, no, I'm just gonna tell people. I got a surprise telephone call this morning from the Northwest Labor Coalition, and they asked me to do a presentation on Monday at their executive board meeting to look, giving us some money for the pack. So, I don't know where it came from, but
That's great.
It was good.
That's good.
And we've gotta be careful, of course, in terms of quorum things and so forth, but obviously, you can call upon us as volunteers to go out in the neighborhoods and knock on doors
Oh, we're going to be.
And all that kind of stuff.
Oh, yes, yes. Speaking of that, I just happened to have a little thing here that's, I'm gonna pass that on to Nancy, that tells you about when we're gonna be walking. Didn't wanna cut you off, and David, I know you're still on, but
Yep, on my own time.
On your own time? No, no. Did you have more to say on this one?
I just wanted to remind everyone that under item eight A, there are state funding, and there's basically, under item eight A, there's a draft letter of support for Willamette Falls, and that's on our, available on our website on our agenda, so if there are any citizens, or business groups, or others who want to write letters of support for Blue Heron funding, and don't feel like you have to restrict those letters to state offices only, because you also have federal elected officials that would probably love to hear from you.
I just had the one more thing about the CET grant.
Okay, sure.
Just one more, one more update. Carlotta was discussing earlier about the construction excise tax grant process, and she talked about ours' application, as well as the one in Wesleyan that's submitted for just over the forty-three bridge, where the police station is, and just trying to look at that area there. And we actually met with their staff, they're very interested in the work we're doing here. You know, we're just, we're so tied together in proximity with the forty-three bridge, and the opportunities on both sides of there, and the amount of traffic, both vehicular, pedestrian, bike that goes across both of those. And so we discussed just showing, you know, that we support one another as communities, that we're engaging with one another in communities, and if it would be okay if we wrote a letter, a joint letter together, just, just saying, you know, we hope both of us get it, if one of us gets it, you know, we wanna work together, we think it's good for the area, and for the community, and for the region. So I just wanted to let you know that we would like to bring that, have the mayor sign that, but that we were thinking of submitting that with the construction excise tax grant as well.
We're not going to say, if we get it, we're splitting it our way.
We support them. We support them, but if we only get one, it's gonna be us.
It's gonna be us. Yes.
Kinda what you heard this afternoon, didn't it?
It is exactly what I heard this afternoon, so it will be very bland. It is, there's quite an opportunity, and I think that the spin-off from these projects are intertwined, and they affect both of our communities greatly.
We've, we had, I should, apparently you were done, I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn now. But we've had tremendous support from various entities and agencies. County Chair Dyke of Washington County had come on one of the tours, and he wrote a letter of support. The, the county, Multnomah County Commissioner Smith, Loretta Smith, who is Chair of IMPACT, she wrote a letter of support for IMPACT, trying to get the county commission of Multnomah County to write a letter of support, and they're not willing to do that at this stage, but Carlotta, and to some degree, I are involved in trying to arrange a tour with the, both Multnomah County Commission, and also the city commission and mayor of Portland, to come out on a tour as well, so seeking support from Portland as well. But we've been, we've been very fortunate that most of our immediate region recognizes the economic and potential of Willamette Falls and this particular site, and we've just, we've just had great support from the broader community.
Seems like when you get 'em down there right by the edge of the water. You don't have to say very much, it sells itself.
Speaking of letters of support, didn't William Gifford send us an email about support?
Yes, and that's, that's what, under item eight A, and I'm gonna talk to Nancy about this offline, but I'm gonna try to get those available on the website, along with a listing of all the state and federal officials, and how to contact them, so for people that wanna write.
Kathy, anything?
Nothing else.
Any of our other commissioners wish to speak up?
I have nothing, no.
With that, we're going to adjourn into executive session.
No.
It is
No?
We have to finish, we have to finish.
Have Jim, Jim Leffler, is he still here?
Yes.
He's probably in his office.
Yes, we have, and I think it'll have to do, probably with, I don't know how to say it, but labor negotiations, but that's the best one I can come up with.
It's a continuation.
It's a continuation of a former executive session, so it'll be reconvenienced to executive session.